Yeah.
I want to see this. Court.
It's that one.
I think we'll start here. What, I think we'll start there. Two, two. Start down. Oh, no.
And a leg too.
Is that on the hospital, that partial? Okay. Yeah, I thought that about.
Yeah.
Those are just a partial pay on it?
Partial pay on it, yeah. This is...
Oh, that, was that? Does it want that on it?
Yeah, this is actually to the abstract office. Um, since it's taken so long, they wanted that back abstracted. Paid at least, and then the closing cost is the four hundred. We'll pay that whenever they get through with that.
Just like paying it off.
You still can't get over it?
I'm trying.
Where does she live at?
Supposedly, which is all.
I don't know, it's, you know, like heated or something. I just don't know, whatever.
That paper, I don't know.
Last time our medical colleague. This case is, they don't call you. Don't answer this.
Yeah. Well, my mom got one that said it was from my family the other day, wanting her...
Assistant go on. Uh, I think this is good.
Yeah, I hope it is.
I guess that jet responders. I'll make a motion, accept that without us. Fair. Don't like it, purchase orders?
We have the blankets from EMS, District Two, Three. The Assessor, County General, Jet Responders, and that's good time to arrest you. Here until this time, the top of the discounter general ones.
See, the good devil. I need to show this to my ears. We're also... Fair. Requesting, uh, monthly officer reports.
We have the last reports from the, uh, Port Preservation and the Assessor.
Official except monthly officer report. Chair request for Mr. One. Upper agreement, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, prepared here in Grove Control, County. Thirty-four hundred dollars.
Increase isn't until twenty twenty-six. I read that twenty times and I don't know why I didn't notice that. So, it's still the twenty-four hundred dollars, um, for twenty-four, twenty-five, and then it will go up a thousand.
What's this here for?
That's, that...
Beaver guy?
Yeah.
Are you using? What's this? Beaver guy? Are you using? I mean, we gotta get those sprays or anything.
I mean, we got, um...
A little trapper.
Oh, I bet you know for spraying the...
No.
Oh, this is something different?
The rodent, no, this is the guy that does the, yeah, comes and traps the beaver to do all the other.
I've used. I've used. So, we used that boy there. I didn't know if he had another guy. We got a few people in there that we actually had different. Is this if we only use him?
Well, he sends a bill for the whole year, no matter whether you use him or not. So, if you guys don't want to sign the contract, then we just make a motion.
I'm not using. I don't, I'm, uh... I need to check too. Sure. Can we...
What was his last name?
We have two different.
Cantelli or, yeah, Cantelli or Cantell or something like that.
Chris, I mean, that's a lot of money if you don't got that.
Yeah.
We can take one.
I mean, they've used him in the past. I know they've used him in the past up there in our area. I know that.
No, I know this three is used. Yeah, what's table number? Because I know there's somebody up there using the state, but they're free now. We're quite easy. Yeah.
Who wants to make questions?
I'll make a motion. Second. Fair. I'll find out. Yeah, I know, it's a little bit sad. Cantelli, but, yeah.
He's not, he's not to the state, that was just a...
He works for the, is it the same Cantelli that works for the?
Fish hatchery.
Fish hatchery.
Yeah.
Well, it's, I mean, do we have to sign this contract then for him to come? Better than...
Well, I think that's who they've been using, this thing Cantelli here.
Yeah, this is the...
That's what I was looking for, Cantelli, is that, I don't think that's him. Well, it doesn't even say wildlife, I mean, this is...
This is the one that they send every year.
But I thought Cantelli just did it on his own.
The checks go to Cantelli himself, so... I don't know if anybody has his number on it, but this is...
Here's that, if you have any concerns or questions, here's a four or five number.
I called that guy twenty times before I got ahold of him. And yeah, this is just the state one, but I don't know if we have to sign this for the Cantelli guy or not.
That's why I can find out before we...
Well, if we're not using the thing, catching, I hate to give them. I'd look to, look at you. We were using somebody, nobody's switching because of the other person.
The increase isn't until twenty twenty-six, so the last year I've changed it. Twenty-four hundred.
We find out more info on it till, and then put it on next week.
Yep.
Okay, uh, transfer appropriate treasure, T-T treasure, personal services, one hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Fair. Contract for Western Plains, Youth and Family Services, County.
I'll let one of you to do that. All fair.
Property exits, even for District Two.
We need to make this with a change to District Co- One, because I don't know if somebody called back yet, but I didn't notice it again after I posted the agenda. So, it says District One. Somebody marked it out and put District One, I don't know. I don't miss a call.
You were going to haul it off for, uh... They lived out here on her, uh... Tyson called. Then he said that you didn't want it or wasn't going to use it. She called and asked if I want to haul it off. So, I think it's supposed to be District Two.
Where at?
Up here on, right across the North Bridge, Essam Rock.
Oh, it's going to be a few... Are you getting it then?
Yeah, I was like...
Oh.
They called me.
I don't know who called and changed it, because I didn't change it. Like I said, I put it as District Two.
So, maybe District Two then?
Do you want it or you want it?
You guys decided, I said, I don't know who called and changed it or what.
So, yeah, man, I'll say it would be better, but...
Doesn't matter to me, however.
I can haul it off, you can haul it off. She's, they've just called somebody like the guy, so...
It's right there, it's...
It's back in the madness, okay.
It doesn't matter to me, however.
You got a place for it? How, oh, I got a place for it.
All you need when you have...
Okay, so no change then?
I put on two.
Like I said, I don't know who called and who changed it or anything else, so when I looked at it this morning, I'm like, oh...
Far as I know, it's going to be two.
Okay, and that's how I had it on. You had called and told me that you had a private property, so that's what I put it on.
Yes, he's woman gone fast.
Fair. Uh, this one needs fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Let me know when you need it.
What happened, sir?
Something both these pages in?
No, that other one is just the one that I sent them. So, and the other one, when it came in, yeah, when it came in, it just came in as a short form, so I just stapled them both together.
So, I just wanted that top page.
One of these county generals, Garrett, I think, is the officer. I didn't have a mind.
Oh.
There you go. There's a county general, officers, yeah. Make the motion, we accept the estimate. Uh, part-time employee for nine-one-one dispatch, she gave me some... She said it gets long pretty good, but they can use... Part-time went in there. How we doing?
It's my deal, if they're getting long good, then...
Oh, we got a budget for anymore?
I know.
Hey, it's for a part-time.
I think, uh, Brian McNeil said he's willing to be a part-time.
What's that, I hear that?
Yeah, he says he's willing to do part-time.
But if they have an emergency call...
Yeah, that's my, that's my deal, I don't know. I don't know.
Drop and go, which I guess they got other deputies that can take it.
Yes. Yeah, she pays, she paid for her part-time out of her, um... Still, yeah.
Be all four running.
Yeah, I would too. But same time, like you said, she's sitting there getting along pretty good.
It's here.
It's here.
What do you think? We're talking two years, how we gonna get these things put together?
I know.
Another thing, please.
I don't know. Honestly, I think... They thought you went out of her...
Even where her, uh, account says.
I ran these. This was the end of March. I mean, she's asking for fifteen thousand in her part-time. Um, last year she asked for ten thousand, used eight thousand. So, she pays a little bit out of her budgeted account, the most of it she pays out of her... She pays five, um, three out of... One account and two out of the other account, or two out of her sales tax and the other. To lower her management.
Why does it not? Want to finish, because if they're getting along decent right now, you're on the board out there with them. Yeah, we have our next meeting until June, just cause I turned here or whatever. Uh... I don't, I'll let her hold on to have another meeting, please.
How many employees does an office have that you have in there?
Eighteen, I heard.
Just three, four, nine. Just like I said, she pays, she has budgeted in for herself and three deputies. And then she pays three deputies out of one account and two deputies out of the other, alternating between her and hands nine-one-one and her sales tax. She have time.
Wait, that's our next number one.
I haven't, it's been a long time since I've sat down and figured out how many hires it takes, how many employees it takes.
Well, when she had, when I had on there last time, you guys just said advertise for it, so she advertised for it, and this is what she got, so I think that's why it came back up, because this is the ones that she got.
Well, one thing about McNeil, you could probably, if you didn't need him, he'd probably be flexible. Just to be on there as a backup. Or a reserve, maybe, to part-time resources.
Well, he lives here in town, if somebody calls in sick or something and you don't have someone.
Well, I would think he would have some training, that's, that kind of stuff's already on hand. I would be willing to go that route if you wanted to use-
And he's willing to go part-time.
Yeah, very part-time way, but having-
Yeah, yeah, right, right. So, I mean, she's sitting here about part-time right now.
I'm fine with that, sure, right, see some work for it, we discussed combining them two. On point. Well, I still feel like we've got beat up on McNeil, we may as well-
Have big, got raised.
You gotta have dispatch, I mean-
Oh, yeah.
So...
Put a motion on that then?
Motion.
Second. All fair.
Is the motion for McNeil there?
Yes, to be part-time. Or a server, or backup, or whatever you wanna call it.
Okay, votes entered into executive session. Discussion on employment hiring.
Motion.
All second. Heard you second. Okay, all fair.
Where did you work at?
Good. I'll make a motion to turn over decision.
All second. All fair. Uh, take action, no action regarding executive session.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, take Nancy Lambert's job duties and, uh, distributed amongst the three administrative assistants for each county board.
Can you say what their names are out loud for me? The girls.
Latoya Hunter, Ashley Shields, and Laura Ducker.
Thank you.
All second. All fair. Uh, you have some business.
Richard.